I will now call to order a special meeting of council on the two, two thousand and twenty-one budget discussions. On Wednesday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty at six P M. Note, we'll turn first to attendance. And I note that all members of council are in attendance with the exception of councillor Akagi and councillor Gummichelle. Who we hope will be able to join us in progress, not having heard whether they're absent for the entire meeting. I also want to advise the public that may be watching. But by various means that we have with this chief administrative officer and treasurer Chris Spear. We have Paul Nauper, our clerk and senior administrator. And I believe we have Emily Dodd and our assistant treasurer and we have Terry Acton. Our asset and operations manager who will also be sitting in on the meeting. All of whom have, have had a tremendous hand in the preparation of this budget. So, uh, we, uh, we will move to, uh, the approval of the agenda as written, please, and a mover for that.
I still move.
Thank you councillor Bishop and a seconder.
I'll second that, your worship.
Okay, thank you Deputy Mayor Henderson. All in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We will, uh, now call for disclosure of conflict of interest by any member of council in relation to the matters before us tonight. Hearing none, we can move on. We will go directly to introduction, consideration, passing of bylaws and motions. And it is in fact a council F A two zero zero seven oh four, council workshop five for budget discussions twenty twenty-one. Council, uh, what I'm proposing to do tonight is to turn this matter over to Mr Spear initially. To go through with us the budget changes that were made in draft four, which you have before you. Following the last discussion of budget that we had. Then I think we will move after that, uh, with the assistance of mostly, I think, Mr Spear. To go through the capital budget that's proposed for general. And this is in reaction to a request by Deputy Mayor Henderson at the last meeting. That we go through item by item in the capital budget to see whether we have a consensus, consensus on this draft of those matters. And then I heard just briefly earlier from councillor Groo, thank you councillor Groo. That we should need to spend a little time going through in the same sort of manner with the utilities budget, particularly the capital expenditures. That remain, so that was a big mouthful, but, uh, that seems like a proper way to go. I would also just, uh, remind members of the public that are watching in and, uh. Will be here for question period, that questions need to relate only to the budget for twenty twenty-one. There'll be another opportunity on Monday night at the regular meeting to talk about the agenda that we have on Monday night. So, uh, Mr Spear, that was a long-winded introduction, but, uh, if you don't mind taking over, thank you.
Thank you, your worship, I'll just double check, okay. Everyone see the title screen, Tennessee Andrews Budget Discussions?
Yes.
Yep, okay, at least, okay, thank you. Alright, so folks, I'm just gonna go through kind of the changes that we had tonight and I didn't want to go into an in-depth. Yet, because we've gone through a lot of this already. So between the meeting last week and this week, the following changes have been made. So, as requests, there was a request from the Chamber of Commerce for forty-five thousand dollars. And it was instructed to staff that we transfer the town portion of the current year's. Tor- tourism accommodation levy to the town, which on this version that's before you is seventeen thousand seven hundred. But there's been significant changes to that since we prepared this last Friday, so we'll update that in a couple of minutes. We increased the medical center janitorial to fifteen thousand dollars in light of the larger space. Because of the, um, retirement of, of a person on staff, we reduced the arena wages and benefits. By thirty thousand dollars, which would be about six months worth of wages for next year until we decide longer term what to do with that position. We added ten thousand dollars for the ice plant refurbishments as discussed. We also added twenty-five thousand dollars for further wellness center equipment, whatever form that may take. It was, from my recollection, specifically to the fitness area, um, we're trying to get more equipment. But it was offset by a New Horizons grant for twenty-five thousand dollars, which, uh, Mr Nauper submitted, I think, a couple of weeks ago or last week. So that, that's in, in the works. We also added a project that we found out about last week, if you're excited, is regards to active transportation that had just come to us. Early last week, so there's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars both for next year and the year after, so it's a one point five million dollar project. Federal funding is eighty percent, so sixty thousand dollars each year and the town portion of that would be a hundred and fifty thousand. So the general fund debt over five, i- is two point one additional debt over five years, which considering the size of those projects. I'm double checking myself, that might be two point one next year. Two point one in the next five, so debt servicing in two thousand nineteen was five point eight percent. By twenty twenty-five, it only goes to seven point five percent. So as discussed previously, it's about ten percent is about the limit that the province of New Brunswick starts to worry about the expenditure. Although by legislation, towns can spend up twenty percent of the general budget for debt servicing. And are still being compliant with the regulations. Now, I think we have two large projects that are coming on board in the next two years. And I think that type of debt resurfacing is pretty good. You know, we've got, uh, one from the, um, Wharf and then the other one potentially, potentially on active transportation. So I think these are big generational style projects that are worth taking into. Something I don't have brought into this was included in your documentation is there's actually after five years. There's still half a million dollars in reserve funds left in general capital. So if this debt load is still too significant for council, we could increase, uh, the transfers from reserve funds to reduce that many of the years moving ahead. We'll look at that in a little bit. Now, the tourism accommodation levy, uh, it's a good news story, but it kind of changes our discussion from last time. So the version that we have in front of you, that we only knew at the preparation of these reports is that we had fifty-three thousand dollars in collections. But this week we collected the rest of the reports, there's actually a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in total collections for the tourism accommodation levy. So considering the pandemic, it's pretty good. So right now, under our current arrangement, ninety thousand dollars is going to the tourism accommodation levy board for promotion. Forty-six thousand dollars to the town and seven thousand dollars in what we're calling admin fee, which is meant for the legal defense fund. And so, that is the breakdown, that would be substantially, I had to make a little bit of an estimate for the last quarter. But generally, those are so small that it won't make a much of a change to it. So with all that said, this current budget was prepared assuming that all of the town's portion. Would go to the chamber, but at that point we only thought of seventeen thousand dollars. So now that it's jumped up to forty-six thousand dollars, I just want to make council aware of that. You probably should have a discussion on that tonight about how you want to deal with that. For your worship, I think I'll add, before we get into the capitals, I'll finish my presentation and we'll circle back to this if you don't mind.
Don't mind, go ahead, Mr Spear.
So the utility fund. Built in right now is increased annual revenues of four percent. Our current bylaw only allows two percent, so we'll have to look at how that's going to be achieved. But staff can do that over the next few weeks and give options back to this council for their deliberation. But keeping with, um, other areas, we want to increase expenses by about two percent, which is the rate of inflation that we expect over the next few years. And even discuss, hearing the news on the way home, the bank rate is going to be held for at least another year to quarter of a percent. So I think the two percent is plenty safe on that side of things. The big capital projects within the, uh, utility fund are, the steel reservoir needs to be refurbished. As you know, we did the concrete reservoir earlier this year and that was three hundred thousand dollars. There's equipment replacement primarily at the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant for two hundred and fifty-two thousand. And upgrading various water and sewer lines in the town for about three hundred and seventy-four thousand. So in twenty twenty-one, we're taking on additional debt of seven hundred and forty-six thousand and three point six million dollars in additional debt over the five years. Of our projections. I'll go through this, I know we're circling back to other questions, but next steps. I'm hoping we can approve the budget either this coming Monday night by adding it to the agenda or next Wednesday night. Just to remind you that the province wants their form in hand by, I think, November the twentieth. So we're down to our last couple of weeks that council can debate this. Then we need to forward the, the documents to the federal government. And even though we've got these large projects and that you may approve over the next few weeks or couple of weeks. Staff will certainly go back to council for more deliberation and instruction about the Wharf and the active transportation projects. We certainly won't be taking this upon our own, um, initiative. So just keep that in mind, that you're not necessarily giving us blind permission to fly forward without getting back to you guys and some of these larger initiatives. So I had it open to questions, but maybe on the presentation, but we're gonna head, I think, circle around to other stuff in a minute, your worship. So it's up to you if you want to do questions now or questions later.
Oh, I think, uh, we should circle back around, uh, and talk a little more about the, uh, accommodation levy.
Okay. I'll just bring that back up. So certainly it is a good news story, as I previously said, and originally. The accommodation levy board had used our figures as well, so they figured they're only going to get about forty-five or fifty thousand dollars towards promotion. And then we'd have seventeen thousand for tourism development, which at the last meeting council had said, we just transferred that to the Chamber of Commerce for their initiatives and then moved forward. But the big question now is that's, you know, more than, almost tripled what originally thought. There's ninety thousand dollars going to the Talb and forty-six thousand dollars coming to the town. And so it's whether you still want to transfer that whole amount to the chamber. And there's one other question, because I saw Neil was on earlier and I think Katie was joining, was, is in relation to the V I C. So from their understanding, they are responsible for the visitor information center, they'll accept that. But it's up to them whether they actually operate it or not. And so, you know, they want to know if that's the flexibility or if council is demanding that they have a V I C. Operating in the future, or at least next year. One of their concerns, of course, was, as we saw in earlier reports, that the numbers at the visitor information center in this year at the Atlantic Bubble were substantially low, very low. May not be worth having it in another situation like that. But they didn't really understand or wanted clarity about what your opinion was on the operations of the V I C. That if, you know, they're willing to accept it, but also only willing to operate it when they deem necessary. And maybe at the end you can follow up more with Mr Shorthouse, but that's kind of the understanding. So I guess it really, now question, or council, I need you to, I guess, instruct us on knowing that the collections are so much higher, what you'd like to do. Moving forward to next year. So what we're really left with is that the chamber has asked for forty-five thousand, the accommodation levy is ninety thousand. And, uh, again, their original hope when they made the application was the tourism board would still get all their funding. Plus the town will provide forty-five. But in this case, we are only going to go with seventeen a week ago, but as we see our town's portions up to forty-six. So, uh, I guess with, uh, Mr Shorthouse and stuff being here, we're just, everyone just wants to see what it is, everyone to make plans moving forward.
Hey, uh, council, uh, anybody have a question about that at this point in time? I was going to ask Deputy Mayor Henderson to lead the discussion, perhaps because of his prior involvement to this. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, yeah, sure, so, uh, I guess, uh, look, yeah, two ways. Obviously, when we originally, uh, created this, this bylaw, we anticipated that the funds would be a lot more than they are. However, with that being said, this is definitely, uh, good news and to be honest, we, it, it's probably something we should have expected. I, I know that it was a lot slower in town than we anticipated, but not that much slower. So the fact that the numbers coming in there seems to make a lot more sense based on what we saw this year. But yeah, it's, it's up for council debate. Just a, a couple of things is just to remind council that, uh, for one industry, the tour boat operators, I think we forgave them almost seventy thousand dollars alone. That one industry, and this one is one that could look after all of them. One could argue that since it's less than we originally forecasted, uh, it makes sense to reinvest. It's going to be, we can't take our success for year one for, for granted for year two. I, I think we need to continue to find ways in which to put St Andrews on the map. When it comes to competing with other, uh, staycation locations. Uh, and just because people again came here this past summer does not mean that we are going to be a vacation hotspot for them next year. So there's a lot of arguments before that. I will say that, uh, the forty-five thousand in the Talb, I understand that the forty-five thousand is to operate the visitor information center. But I really think that the forty-five thousand from the chamber just needs to be removed from this conversation. The money that was collected for this fund was always meant for Talb and never for the Chamber of Commerce. So the chamber, if Talb decide to run a visitor information center, it's not, it's their money, it's not the Chamber of Commerce. I know it's a subcommittee, but Talb was never meant to subsidize the Chamber of Commerce, so we got to make sure that it's not that. The other thing I will say is if we do decide to, you know, leave it as is or increase it, I, I do think that we do need to see a budget. We had an original presentation a, a long time ago on what it could look like. But, um, just like the tour, uh, the, sorry, the B I A levy, they present an annual budget to us. So that way, if somebody on the street asks us, where did that money go, we're able to say that it went here, here and here. I think when you're giving that much money to an organization, we need to know exactly what the plan is for the year. So I think we need to challenge Talb to that. But, uh, net, net, where, where my head's at personally is, um, it's a lot less than we've ever had to market this region. So C C R T A's, uh, for the, for, at least the last decade has had over two hundred thousand dollars to market St Andrews and surrounding area. Uh, and this amount of fun, although it is a lot, it's a lot less than they've ever had to market the area. So although it sounds like a, a great amount of money, my head's at, these are basically, these are funds collected by. Tourists that are coming to our area. I think that in a year where the money is lower than normal and a year in which we can't take anything for granted. I think we should reinvest it into the tourism providers to continue to make sure in better times that this fund continues to service each other. Because there could be a lot of struggling businesses next summer.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor, just one more question from me. Could you comment on what you raised at the last meeting again? About the possibility of some investment by the provincial government in the visitor information center in view of, do we have any more information? I know it's only been a week, but that struck a chord with me.
No, so just to, to echo those comments, so, um, I think it's in partnership with Talb and the town of St Andrews. I think we need to look at our provincial government in the visitor information center. I am aware that they have not funded our V I C for a number of years, but the reality is, is they were funding one in St Stephen. And they made the decision last year that that is the only one in the province that they did not run. So therefore they had a budget savings by closing St Stephen. As such, St Andrews, uh, is naturally the spot in the region that makes the most sense to invest in a visitor information center. And, and we're not asking for the full amount of the budget, we're just asking them help us staff it. So I think that with their budget savings, uh, we're kind of a center point. If you're coming from Fredericton or you're coming from St John, we can help cascade traffic, not just in St Andrews. But also to give them information on where they can go in St Stephen, St George. We, if we're willing to operate a visitor information center and there's been budget fair in the past. I don't see why we're not putting pressure on our, our partners at the provincial government to consider investing in St Andrews.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, I, I agree with you fully, uh, council, I'll open up the questions from council. Your worship? Yes, council group.
Thank you, um, just to clarify, and, and I think when we were talking before about, um, giving the town portion to Talb. We were talking about, uh, a forecasted amount of fifty-three thousand dollars total for everything. Now, the forecast is coming in at a hundred and forty-three thousand. I, I think if we, uh, stick to the original, uh, percentages that were set out in the tourism accommodation levy. Where Talb would get, uh, approximately ninety thousand dollars and the town would retain forty-five thousand. For tourism development, I think that's quite reasonable in the fact that we are going, we as a town are going to incur. Uh, additional expenditures for tourism development, um, much as we did this year, uh, with, with, uh. The, the, the blocking off of Water Street and things like that. But I think that we need to, that, that retention of the, the tourism development dollars by the town is a responsible thing to do. And it also gives Talb, uh, adequate funding, a lot more funding than they would have gotten previously, uh, under our previous plan. So it's served that happy medium and I think it accomplishes, uh, all the goals that we were looking at before. So I, I would suggest that we, uh, we go with the tourism accommodation breakdown. That, um, the, the staff have suggested and I, I think with ninety thousand going to Talb, forty-five thousand, which is the town portion. And approximately seven thousand for the, um, administration fee, thank you.
Uh, anyone else, uh, council? I just want to clarify something, I want to make sure that we're right here, because, uh, hard to get confused about three different things. But, uh, I think Deputy Mayor Henderson said it properly. Talb is Talb, Talb is not required to fund a visitor information center. That's a piece of business between town council and the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce is asking us for forty-five thousand dollars. The only question left is should we give them our forty-six thousand share? Because we agree to the entire amount, which then obviates any taxpayer money going to the Chamber of Commerce. This is essentially money paid by, uh, visitors to our town, uh, when they paid the levy. Do we want to do it that way? And then it frees up that the ninety-one thousand dollars that goes to Talb is for destination marketing. And all of the other promotional things that we set that committee up for in the first place. Deputy Mayor, am I off, am I out to lunch here or is that exactly the assessment you made of it?
It can be, it's a little bit, so, so first of all, Talb is a subcommittee of the Chamber of Commerce, so. But the, the funds that we have collected are specifically for tourism initiatives and a Chamber of Commerce. If you gave it straight to the Chamber of Commerce, they deal with tourism, but they also deal with other industries, whether it be institutional or, you know, service providers. So we've got to make sure that all of the money goes to Talb and then it's up to Talb if they want to do the visitor information center or not. So, uh, if they decide to do the visitor information center, then, um, I expect that money to go into the visitor information center. I don't expect a, a journal entry going to the Chamber of Commerce and it's something that's just, we, we need to make sure that all of that money that we collected for tourism. Is indeed for tourism, either way, no matter what that amount is, so.
Right.
I, I, we, we owe it, the money we give to Talb, what we're asking for is for Talb to send back a budget to us to say what they're spending it on. No matter if it's for the full amount or if it's for a less amount, it's, it's, uh, either way, we need to have some accountability on that number from Talb. Because that's, that's who we're giving the money to.
Right, but we're giving them, but when it comes down to our share of the tourism levy, it comes directly to the town.
That's correct.
Yeah, is, it, you know, we give them their share, but we keep our share as part of our budget revenue, correct? And, uh, we decide whether we give any of that to the Chamber of Commerce for whatever reason. Or are we expecting Talb to give, are we, are we telling Talb as subcommittee of the Chamber of Commerce? That some of the money that we're giving to them as a subcommittee, which probably should go through the chamber anyway, if they're only a subcommittee of the Chamber of Commerce. That any, that they're, they're on the hook to pay for the visitor information center.
I would, I would say that what we would look for is Talb, like, so the people that are making decisions on Talb are different than their board. The Talb is, is tourism provider, so I would expect that Talb themselves send us through Mr, uh, uh, Shorthouse who's on here. Him himself as chair of Talb sends us what the budget is for the year. Uh, and if they are giving funds to the Chamber of Commerce, we need to know how much and why. Directly, because, because Talb's initiatives are different than the Chamber of Commerce, they're a subcommittee, they're specifically for, for one industry. Because that's what we're allowed to collect the money from.
Right, I get it, but, uh, but the visitor information center, well-named, is about visitors, it's not, so. What does council want to invest in the visitor information center and where's that money going to come from, I guess, cutting to the chase here?
I'm good with agreeing to, or, and I think it's a request of the, of the group, that they don't need to run it necessarily. If they think it's worthwhile, if they want to run a V I C, then, then that's the money they have to run it with. But if, if, if the tourist operators themselves do not see the use of it, then I don't know why the town would ever run one.
That, that's, that's correct, so, uh, your worship, through you is, is to agree with councillor Harrison is. We, what we're expected is to say, this is the funds, what is your plan? And it's up to them themselves if they're going to use their funds to fund a visitor information center or they are not going to. It all depends if they think that that's, that's value or could they take those dollars and invest them something for greater, uh, return for, for all those that are interested.
Now, the, the, the only thing in terms of sharing with the chamber, I wouldn't be too off-put if. The, whatever you want to call it, executive director of Talb or whatever the paid position they'll probably have is a shared position. I like, 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 I, I think there can be some gains there by, by, you know, not having a full time on either side. But I, I think the deputy mayor is right, that they, it does have to be a bit of a silo in terms of that money only should be spent on. The, uh, the tourism sector.
Councillor Akagi? Do you have a question?
No, I do not.
Oh, you're just, your name just came up on the screen, that's all?
Nope.
Okay, uh, council group?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add to the discussion is that we already have a bylaw. For the tourism accommodation levy that clearly indicates how the money is to be divided. And, um, you know, we, we, we're obligated to follow that bylaw or start talking about amending that bylaw. So i- i- it's, I think the discussion's pretty clear cut. Is two-thirds of the money goes to Talb, one-third of the money goes for tourism development, which is controlled by the town.
Through, through your worship, when it was a, a less amount of money last week, councillor Groo did not speak to that very fact. He was fine giving a hundred percent to Talb, it's just now that it's a larger sum that he's saying, let's stick to the bylaw. We were, we were all last week unanimous, from what my understanding is, saying that we were comfortable with a hundred percent going to Talb. So, uh, it just seems like now that it's more, we're kind of changing our story a little bit.
Well, no, we have a bylaw, if we're not going to follow our own bylaws, I think, why do we make them? You know, it's, it's.
But you, you can change bylaws and, and last week, again, I, I don't, I didn't hear you being opposed to the full amount, it's just now that it's more money, uh, again, through.
I don't think we need to change anything, I think we just have to phrase it in the way that our one-third, our project this year is giving it to Talb. And, uh, like, like, I think we can have it both ways without changing bylaws or, and why indeed do we make these key?
Why do we, yes.
Well, councillor Harrison has the, uh, has the right idea on how, how to, how to proceed forward, should we do it or not?
Right, the only problem that I have is that we currently have in front of us a request for forty-five thousand dollars from the Chamber of Commerce. To the town, right? And, uh, that request involves both tourism development and other things. And we need to make a decision and we're trying to plan a budget so that we will either have money which we direct to give to the Chamber of Commerce directly. Or we don't, right at the moment, if we give everything to Talb, to me, I think that's the reverse of what it should be. If Talb is an independent entity, that's one thing, if there is a subcommittee of the Chamber of Commerce, seems a little awkward to, uh, you know, that's, uh. For us to be giving all of our money to a subcommittee of the Chamber of Commerce and then telling the Chamber of Commerce, there's no money left for them. To do what they asked us for. And it also seems ridiculous to me that we should look at changing our budget and finding taxpayer money on top of the. Big return we got on the, uh, accommodation, uh, levy, that we need to find another forty-six thousand dollars or, or some part of that. that we need to find another forty-six thousand dollars or, or some part of that to make a decision about a grant to the Chamber of Commerce. So, you know, maybe I'm confused unnecessarily, but I don't see it the same way you do. I say tourism development for forty, for forty-six thousand dollars is in fact running a, running a, a, a Tourism Information Center is in fact tourism development. Much like we discussed early on when we were debating the bylaw for the Accommodation Levy about building new washrooms for tourists, because that was tourism development and should be done by the town.
The, the bylaw that we passed on, on the Tourism Accommodation Levy, we were very clear that the VIC was part of the tourism promotion piece, not tourism development.
Right.
And, and I think it was Council more or less agreed at the last meeting that we were not going to provide money to the Chamber of Commerce. We were going to provide money to the TALB. And I think Deputy Mayor was very clear on that issue.
Correct. So basically, just to be clear, the chamber, it, it is one in the same in some sense. So the chamber is saying they need the forty-five thousand essentially to run the Visitor Information Center. We, but however, when we made the agreement, the agreement was that a subcommittee would be formed to dictate how the funds are going. So all I'm saying is that we allocate the funds to the subcommittee, and should they decide to run the Visitor Information Center, then they can partner with the Chamber of Commerce with that amount of money. But the money we get goes to that committee that they set up specifically for this fund. And, and again, it could be, i- i- it's the same money because they're asking for forty. Basically, the chamber money is for the VIC. We're just saying we're going to let TALB decide if they want a VIC or not. That, that's what it comes down to, no matter what amount of money we have. The amount of money we give them will probably help them make a decision. Because essentially, that could eat up very quickly. Half of that, if it is ninety, half that ninety will go to a Visitor Information Center based on the way we ran it.
So, so you're, so you're suggesting that, that the Visitor Information Piece has to do with TALB? It comes out of their ninety-one thousand dollars, and we collect forty-six thousand dollars, although we don't currently have a plan for the expenditure of that forty-six thousand.
Correct. And since the, what I'm proposing is since the fund is still almost fifty percent or at least sixty percent what we thought it was when we created TALB, sorry, when we create, when, when they created TALB, so we talked about this fund. It's, it's, it's so much smaller than we ever envisioned having. Because of that, I'm saying to reinvest it so we can continue to put heads in beds and continue to grow the fund long-term. But because we had a good year this year, doesn't mean we're going to have one next year. So we need them to find initiatives.
Okay. And the next step is a budget from TALB. Based on the ninety-one thousand dollars, correct?
Sorry, Derek, it froze for me.
Sorry. I just merely was repeating. Sorry. I'm, I'm being difficult today. Sorry. But I just said, the next step is ninety-one thousand dollars to TALB, because that's what the bylaw says. And we will have an expectation of a budget from them as how they're going to spend their ninety-one thousand dollars in 2021.
I think your worship, what we need to do is get consensus if we're giving the extra one-third of the funds to TALB or not. That is, that is what we'll need consensus on. I'm, I'm saying to do it, since it's less than normal, Counselor Grue's saying it's more than we originally planned to give them last week, so we don't need to essentially. Is that correct, Counselor Grue?
Well, I, I, let, let's put it this way. Last week, we were going to give TALB fifty-three thousand dollars. Now we're giving them ninety. So they're getting more than we had planned to give them all along. And we still need the money for tourism development, because we're still going to have to rent washrooms. We're still going to have to do all sorts of tourism development activities. And the town should not have to foot that out of taxpayers' dollars. We should foot it out of the, the tourism, the, the Tourism Accommodations Levy, because that's what it's related to. And the beneficiaries of that are going to be the tourists that come to the town.
Okay.
I guess the, the, TALB is getting more money than was expected anyway.
But less than what we thought it would when we created the bylaw, still?
Well, the bylaw, if you're going to go back to the bylaw, the bylaw has the breakdown of two-thirds, one-third.
Right.
And we're very, it's very clear about where that money goes.
So the money currently, if, if there's a consensus to this position that we give TALB ninety-one thousand dollars and we keep forty-six thousand for ourselves, then that's what we're looking for as a consensus on Council.
Counselor? And I think there's the second question is, do we then have a plan for our forty-whatever thousand, and that's to give it to TALB?
Correct.
Add to their ninety?
Correct.
So we're following the bylaw?
Well, the bylaw says tourism development. So if TALB, TALB is not using it for tourism development, they're using it for tourism promotion. And, and bylaw states that the man, the money is to be managed by the town.
But again, we're, we're going to just have to take this to a vote, your worship? Creating a Visitor Information Center that doesn't exist currently would be tourism development. We don't have a VIC right now. We turned it into a part of a wellness center. So if, if they use that money.
Yeah, but our bylaw states that the Visitor Information Center is tourism promotion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not really worried about the bylaws. So we can just give them out of general funds, the money, and then use the forty towards a trail we're already building or some other thing that could be tourism development? I mean, so I'm not, let's not worry about the bylaw. Do we want to give them forty thousand, I guess is the question, above their ninety? And, and I think we can route it however we need to route it to get to them. So the ultimate question is, you know, they are quite a bit lower than what we expected for their purposes. So do we want to help them out this year? And obviously, not every year, but this year to have more money for their marketing endeavors? That's the way I see it.
I'd like to hear from, from those who've not weighed in yet. As otherwise, we're facing putting this as a motion to the regular meeting next week and vote on it as a separate motion as to what we want to do about this particular part of the budget.
So in essence, the final analysis of this whole discussion is that you're talking about giving ninety-one thousand to TALB and the forty-six thousand, which is his town share, over to the chamber? Am I correct in this? Or no?
Well, I think, I think the prevailing is that it would all go to TALB, and then TALB would decide whether any of that money goes to the chamber proper or not. That's, that's how I understood. Deputy Mayor, is that correct?
I'm sorry. I, I was just, oh, sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Yep. I'll repeat the question. So we're, the final analysis of this whole discussion, we're talking about possibly giving ninety-one thousand to TALB and the town share of forty-six thousand over to the chamber? Or am I incorrect on that?
What, what I was proposing was to give the, the full amount to TALB. And should they want to run a Visitor Information Center, then they can do so. The, the, so basically, the Chamber of Commerce is asking for the money to run a VIC. I'm just saying to give it all to TALB and let TALB decide what they want to do with these funds. Whether it be the full amount or partial amount, it all goes to TALB is what I'm proposing.
Okay. And you're just giving them this amount of money and saying, do, do with it whatever you want. We, would we not want to have something that says, here's the way we plan to spend this money? You, you know, I just don't understand that. And the question of whether we want to, we want to see a VIC in our town, I, I feel really reluctant to say that as a tourist town, we, we, we don't need a VIC or we don't think it's necessary or whatever, you know? But I, I don't really know whether I'm right or wrong on that, but I'm just throwing it out there.
So, so to answer the question, I, I think we all can align that we would, with these funds before they're released, we'd like to see their annual budget. It's a lot of money either way. I think we're all aligned to that. As far, as far as the VIC, this council has debated it every year that I've been on council. And what we're essentially doing, like, giving it to TALB is, is letting the tourism operators themselves decide if that is the best use of tourism dollars in St. Andrews. So they can debate that, whether, because they would feel it the most, whether it's benefiting or not benefiting. If it's not benefiting, where else would they put the dollars? But they would be the ones that understand the impacts the most. So versus us debating, where some, they, they would be the one. I would assume that it's something that they would really like to find a way to make happen, but over to them to figure out how to make it happen.
Okay. Thank you.
And of course, the other option is, and I think this is what Counselor Grue, Counselor Grue jumped in here if I'm misinterpreting what you said. But the, I think what Counselor Grue is saying is that the one-third forty-six thousand dollars belongs to the town. And even if we don't have a specific purpose to spend it tomorrow, it goes into a reserve, and we keep that money until we have tourism development needs that we wish to advance.
Absolutely. That's, that's what I'm advocating, is that we.
So that's another option. We can give the, we can give TALB ninety-one thousand. They determine, file a budget with us and determine how they want to spend the money and whether any of it goes to a VIC or not. And the, in whatever form they, they decide, they have to follow the bylaw, but so do we. We have to follow the bylaw or we have to change the bylaw. So the other option is just to keep in the budget ninety-one thousand for TALB and forty-six thousand for the town for tourism development. And then the decision of how to spend it comes later. It just needs to be in the budget in the appropriate place.
Yeah, your worship, I, I know we talked about a motion, but I, I feel like we can get consensus. Motion is approval of, of the budget itself, because we're making hundred-thousand-dollar decisions left, right, and center in the budget. We're not individually voting for them in formal motion, so.
I agree. I agree. I think we should just decide if, how do we want this to look? It looks, it looks, it's, it's down to two things. It's, it's ninety-one thousand plus forty-six thousand dollars to TALB, or it's ninety-one thousand dollars to TALB and forty-six thousand dollars to the town of St. Andrews as revenue to the budget that is to be reserved for tourism development, whatever we define that to be in 2021.
I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Counselor Akaji, you're there. What do you think?
Well, I agree that we had said that we would give the money to TALB, so I think I would go with that decision that we made before.
So all the money to TALB?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Grue?
The break, I would give ninety-one thousand to TALB and forty-three thousand to the, to the town for tourism development.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I, I would give all of the money to TALB, with the exception of holding back the amount we have, the five percent for, for legal.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Harrison?
Uh, I think I'd give all the money to TALB this year.
Okay. Thank you. And is Counselor Guma Show on? I haven't seen him on the.
He is.
He is. Counselor Guma Show, sorry.
You see me now?
Yeah, I can now. Now I can see you, yes.
Got a mustache.
Counselor Guma Show.
I'd follow that, as much as I'd love to have more money for tourism development on the town side, I think the Deputy Mayor had a leadership role in developing the Tourism Accommodation Levy Board and all, all that stuff. He seems to have pretty good insight into that. And so I would tend to, tend to go with his position that we, that we give all the money to the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. I didn't miss anybody, did I? I don't think so. Okay. Mr. Spear, then I guess it's ninety-one thousand dollars to, to TALB in the budget and nothing in, in tourism development for us.
Your worship would be ninety-one plus forty-six would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay. Whatever way that works in terms of being compliant with the bylaw.
Okay, worship. And so just to, to, to circle back, just so right now, the Chamber of Commerce is not going to be getting anything except whatever the TALB provides them. Is, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And just a couple other notes I do know, and Mr. Shorthouse will probably come on in later, but they actually presented a, a budget earlier today. They're just about there now that they've, have the funds that they know they can put something together. So I'm hoping in the next two weeks, they'll probably have a budget ready for Council. That's the bylaw. They've been working on it, but with this new information, they had to work around it.
Hey, good. Thank you, Council. That took a bit of time, but was occasioned by the fact that we're richer than we think, just like the Scotiabank. Oh, they say we're richer than we think. I think they're richer than we think. Anyway, okay, let's move on. Mr. Spear?
So I guess your worship are going to page nineteen of the budget to discuss capital projects? So I'm just going to go through these relatively quickly. I'll look for someone to raise a hand or shout out if they want me to stop and so you can debate or discuss an item. But we've talked about each of these, and most of them are self-explanatory. But I'll just work through them, and when we get to something that's of interest, let me know. So computers and accessories for the town, seventy-five hundred dollars. We're talking about creating a hallway behind the reception desk. So that would be across from Emily's office. It's about five thousand dollars. We done in-house.
How urgent is that one, Mr. Spear?
Well, if COVID continues, it's fairly urgent. For anyone who's been in, we see we have like a plastic plexiglass thing, and we're continuously trying to go around it close. And it's really, well, to be honest, unprofessional looking. Is it life or death? No, we can go on forever like that. But from a practical standpoint, to give a professional representation to your citizens, it'd be awful nice to get rid of that and rebuild that part of the town hall.
So it's a, it's a temporary measure? That's COVID-related, is that correct?
Somewhere in between with this extra wall and stuff there. So for Council, as you come into the town hall, you know, you come in through that locked door in the front, then you turn left by the reception desk. And even when COVID isn't a thing, you're kind of tripping over the receptionist. And so it's, it's pretty close quarters there with that oversized countertop. So it'd be nice just to be able to move the, the entry point another five feet back. So she has a little more privacy, and people are tripping over her chairs there, they're getting to the other offices.
That won't, that won't interfere with the washroom that's there?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Then, okay, this is the next one. So there's nineteen thousand dollars in there. We're calling it COVID transportation measures. It's, I guess, if we're going to be basically set aside, if we're going to go with something similar to the water, or the Water Street Pilot Project this year, that's to be able to build some type of barricade system along Water Street to prevent the parking. That one, well, that one was priced at a high end with picket fence style. If we go something smaller with planters or something that's ropes instead of a solid barricade the whole way along, that will be significantly less.
This is, this is where that tourism development money would have been useful. Anyway, thank you.
For twenty-five thousand dollars, we're going to recondition the boat ramp down by the yacht club. Then we have about two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollar in our resurfacing budget for asphalt roads. We're hoping for another forty thousand dollars to finish Phase Two of the Pocket Park Elizabeth Street. That's to create a platform, put some more benches and picnic tables along there. That's. Yep.
Sorry to interrupt, but the boat ramp, I'm, I'm assuming that has to be done, or?
Yeah, it's, it's in pretty bad shape. They've been asking for it to be done for about ten years, and I think Terry finally said it's just.
Who's they? Like, like, who kind of has the, like, like, who uses that? Because I mean, a lot of the sailboats obviously don't put in there. Is it just like?
No, just about every boat in town that isn't sailing from somewhere else has to go there. So the boat ramp that's adjacent to the wharf is too shallow. You can't get a boat in there. So just about anyone with a boat on a trailer has to go at that end unless they're putting in somewhere else and sailing into town.
Okay.
Okay, so we're flipping the. Okay, so we're flipping to page twenty now. And we're about two-thirds of the way down the bottom of the page, there's a gravelly zero-turn mower for, to replace one for our Parks and Rec crew. Then there's some equipment, about twelve thousand dollars in equipment for. Public Works or a repertoire for tobacco, canopies for our moor, so reduces the sun on our Parks and Rec crew. And an additional shipping container for Public Works to be able to store water parks, I believe. Okay, page twenty-one. These are all items for the W C O'Neill Arena. So the first one is to replace the sidewalk up front, that's been deferred for a couple of years now and it's in pretty rough shape. It was originally ten for this year, but was deferred because of the COVID, do we sort out how that affect? And the oil tank rehabilitation project will be completed next year for another twenty thousand dollars. There's some insulation needed in the center area of the main hockey rink and peak of the roof, that's six thousand. Upgrade keys and locks for six thousand. Replace the display sign, the twenty-two thousand, Terry, you have to nod, that's more expensive, the two options, correct? We had kind of the monument style.
Yeah, that's, that's the most expensive one, Chris. There was two options that was presented in, back a month ago to council, and I think the first option is around eight thousand dollars to just kind of refurbish what we have now for a sign. And this twenty-two would be for the monument style.
Questions or concerns, council? Okay. Decommission one of the compressors, we have three compressors out back, one of, one of them hasn't been operating for years. This is just basically unhook it from the rest, the actual compressor will stay there, but it's to reduce the ammonia piping that goes through it. And then there's stairs and a walkway that's in the compressor room, that room is about two stories high and we have to replace some wooden stairs there. And as Mister Sharp used to say, it's the nineteen-seventy style that's still in there, so we're trying to update those. The changing room doors need to be replaced, they're pretty rough shape because of the thickness and stuff, that's only two or three of them. Then there's replace the minister, the windows, and this time it's what we're called the Minister's Island End or the Theater End, so the, the. Whole front of the arena, all that glass has been replaced in phases over the last six or seven years, we're trying to get the third phase done. If you go to some of them, there, there is a bit of a safety issue there that some of the, I don't even think it's aluminum, just metal casing of some of those is in pretty rough shape. There will be some economic heat savings and Paul and Terry are working on putting together a plan. It was included in the consultant's budget to get a energy efficiency study done for a couple of buildings in order to build access some more funding, so we may. It's not built into the budget, but that may come towards the end of the year, if we can get that done over the spring, get approval and do that. That's not a hundred percent necessarily, but at this point is highly recommended. Ten thousand dollars for the ice plant refurbishment, just to replace some piping and things that are in the ice plant right now that, that are due for replacement. And then we do have eight thousand dollars in there for the, I guess, cleaning up the office space and. The Minister Island vacated, that the original intent was that the chamber may reoccupy that space. I guess long. Sorry, short, they don't, I know there was a discussion that maybe should be left to them if we're providing free space, and again, they'll have to bring this all to council. But it hasn't been built in any of their budgets to upgrade that space, so. Primarily, there's a big heater there, but there's some windows that, doors that have to be replaced that are actually leaking and have been for a little while, so. You'll can probably speak more of that when he comes on later, but there are some things that have to be done in there, and as we know, eight thousand doesn't cover a lot, and I think. In order to prepare the space for whatever tenant it is, we should do this work.
Should we, should we sort of determine who the long-term tenant in that space is gonna be before we actually do the, the renovations?
I, I think Terry can speak better to this, but I think the renovations are just to clean up stuff that's been there since the beginning of the building. One big thing is, if you know that space, you go in, there's a heater there that acts like a little wall. It's not in use, I don't think it's been in use for decades, we'd like to remove that and then again, replace some of the windows and door on that side, is there anything else, Terry?
Yeah, some of the flooring, Chris, that's got water damage on it. Okay, so we're looking at replacing some of that.
So we're not looking at putting up walls and stuff, we're just cleaning up what's there.
Gotcha, thanks.
Okay, go to page twenty-two now. So most of these are under the fire department. The fire chief has asked for headsets for his fire trucks, so his drivers aren't operating with one hand, I guess that's reasonable considering the size of the vehicles they're driving. Some lounge furniture, under COVID, we've realized they, they have like cushions that are made out of material, not. Plastic or faux leather, so they're just asking to replace a couch and I think a loveseat, just, so it's something that's a lot more wipeable than what they've currently got there. The items that they have are very old and have been there for decades, as far as I know, too, and possibly were donated by the community. Then there's twenty-eight hundred dollars to replace a generator on a truck, so I think, believe that's to operate the jaws of life primarily. When they report to a scene of an accident, but for other equipment on scene. A little further down, there's repaving the parking lot, that would be actually included with the asphalting budget, but it's, we broke it up into two phases that if you. Go through their parking lot there on your own, you'll see that it's beyond cracking, it's falling apart fairly bad. So as it breaks up with these potholes, the more the big trucks run over them, just the more damage it's gonna do, it's gonna accelerate the amount of damage. So Terry may have to speak up on this one, but I think we do the front yard in next year, Terry, and then propose to do the backyard in twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be doing the front, then we have to pulverize the whole front, then repaint the front, then phase two, yes, would be the back part.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I don't know, Chris, I, I've driven by there a few times and I don't see that parking lot as being. In, in that bad of shape comparatively speaking, like when you're driving down the road, like those fire. Trucks are gonna have to go on the, some of the roads in the parking lot. So I see that as a high priority project at this point, because it, it doesn't seem that, I, I, I don't know, I could be convinced otherwise, but. I just don't see the damage there.
Maybe councillor Gru, it'd be better, we can do a walk tour in the next couple of days and I'll show you the concern, just give me a call, drop me an email and we'll. And then a backflow preventer, which goes into our water system, it just needs to be replaced. It's part of our bylaws, so. All right, and page twenty-three, we have thirty-five thousand dollars down for paint the exterior of the courthouse and the shield. I will advise that within the budget, we have fifty percent financing that we hope will come from the province on that. The library's asked for about six thousand dollars, it actually looks really nice and it's, it's gonna be freestanding on the property, not attached to the building. But it's got a heritage feel, similar to. Is it Ross?
Yeah, I did provide, I think a drawing of that sometime, Chris, but yeah, it would be pretty close to the. Museums stock.
But right now, to continue. Okay. And then the storage shed behind the museum and the library where they keep a few, a few gardening tools for fifteen hundred dollars, the stairs almost falling down. And then the library has requested a heat pump in the basement, currently it's electric furnace, we've seen it. Reduction in the heat cost, as, as you know, we've already installed two heat pumps in the building, and so they'd like a third down there and that would pretty much have the building. Fully heat pumped and should see another reduction in electricity. The museum, so the museum right now has the front steps, the concrete steps off of Montague Street are in pretty rough shape. Public Works did a really good job this year of repairing them, it will have to be replaced in the next. Year or two, but the budget there is for twenty-eight thousand dollars to completely. A little higher too, because they're not up to current codes, so they're gonna have to be extended a little bit. But again, I believe we have half that money would come from the province, another built heritage program. At the youth center, they've asked to replace the greenhouse, so they have a little greenhouse there, but it was donated and it's. Pretty rough shape right now, so we want to take that one away and thirty-six hundred dollars is for a kit. That Public Works can build. The picket fence around the, the side of the youth center protects a garden that's there, she uses raised gardens. But it also protects some equipment and some water, the water spout, and that fence is in really bad shape. And we've painted it and repaired as much we can, but Public Works wants to replace it for eleven thousand five hundred. And then. Apparently they're asked for. Big TV for about four hundred bucks now, these Roco TVs and stuff, so that's a reasonable request. All right, now we come to the big ones, so. Sorry, I'm just looking here, okay, so in Parks and Rec, we have trails and sidewalks for next year of six-hundred-and-thirty thousand. But I just noticed, oh no, wait a minute. Sorry, no, I'm confused, okay, we'll skip that one for a second, so I can get my bearings again, so the wharf renovations are being split up into the two. Oh, sorry. I, I do remember that's for, sorry, that was for the road along Joe's Point Road and, and the Brandy Cove Road. So that's still built into the budget, we do have funding underneath for that, although. There's a question under, that we've gotten the new infrastructure project, whether that, there's gonna be separate funding for that specific portion of it, so the six-thirties for that. The wharf.
Sorry, just to be clear, so that was assuming we have outside funding and that plan is still up for discussion, it doesn't necessarily. Have to be those two specific spots of, if through our partners, they determine that they can make it more efficient in other places, is that safe to assume?
Well, no, okay, so here's, do it this way, deputy mayor, so, so up there we have six-hundred-and-thirty for trails and sidewalks. But if you go down almost to the very end, we have seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand down there as well. So there are two separate projects, the first project.
Gotcha.
Was the six-thirty to re, to fix the road along Joe's Point and through Brandy Cove out to Marine Science Drive. And we had built in some funding, which we haven't identified yet, by the way, that the applications will go in, hoping to get that. But then we found out recently from an application we made a couple of years ago, or a year ago, I guess. We've received approval for a one-point-five million dollar project for this act of transportation that council still has to decide. What avenue that's going to take. And I think the sortie's gonna provide recommendations, they'd kind of set the tone and made the original application in partnership with the town. And they'll come back with what they would like to see it spin on, but again, at the end of the day, it's up to council to make the final call on that.
Gotcha.
Just to clarify, the, the six-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollar project was in partnership with the Coastal Link Trail. And the one-point-five million is in partnership with sortie, so two different organizations there. And the, the six-hundred-and-thirty thousand, we were seeking five-hundred-and-four thousand in, in partner money from Coastal Link. And with sortie, it's one, we're, we're receiving one-point-two million from the federal government. So. Two, two different projects, same sort of thing, it's trails.
Yeah, but just to clarify, Coastal Link was never gonna be the partners, they assisted us, but we're gonna look for another partner that. I'll agree with councillor Gru that that one-point-five million project hadn't really taken into consideration that portion of the trail. But the six-thirty was that portion, which was part of the overall scheme of the Van Horn Trail as it ran through St Andrews. Wharf renovation, so as you know, we have a big, close to a five million dollar project on the table, that's gonna have seventy-five percent financing if approved, it hasn't been approved yet. And so there's three million dollars to be spent next year and then one-point-six million in twenty-twenty-two. And working with, council had given us instructions to look at other alternatives and the engineers and I were talking today. And in a couple of three weeks, they'll have that all worked out, including the lifecycle analysis as asked by councillor Gru. So we can work concurrently through this, through this, but it's just council can approve it in theory and then still approve the final design at a later date. And then right now, there is fifteen thousand dollars on electronic wharf gate that has been included in the budget. I guess it goes back to the, it's controversial this year to have the gate there, although it did make life easier, both from a COVID perspective. But also from a operational perspective through the day. One thing that didn't happen this year was that there wasn't a number of tours going out on the tour boats, but in normal summers, you get, you know. A hundred thousand, I think, passengers that go through there, so, or fifty thousand, sorry, passengers that go through there and we get people five abreast on the wharf, it makes it a little hard. For cars to get through there safely, but. But I guess I'll throw it back to council if that wants to be left on the budget or not.
For, for the, the wharf renovations, would it, it, it almost seems like we, we, the cash flow on that might be a bit off still. Because I think we might, i- if we sort of have it split evenly between the two years, that might be more realistic, because we might get to a slow start on this. And, and, because not all the questions have been answered, the design's not complete. And, and you may find that as we get to that, we might spend, I don't know, two and a half million or two, maybe closer to two million this year. And then the balance in twenty-twenty-two, and, and that would really improve our cash flow on the budget for this year. If we just did that, that little change there to spread it out more evenly. Does that make sense?
Well, to some extent, councillor, yes, because we wouldn't start until the fall, we wouldn't take out the summer season, so we'd probably spend. You know, one, one-point-five million this year, one-point-five million early two thousand and twenty-two. Or, you know, and then, you know, then half of the sixteen at late two thousand and twenty-two and half of the sixteen and, or one-point-six in early twenty-twenty-three, just because the way the summer goes.
So you're thinking about spreading it over three years now?
Well, it's possible, because the construction season is, will run from like the first of November till the end of April, so it'll, you know, the, the projects will straddle two fiscal years for the town, so. You know, it won't adjust the debt over five years, but, you know, it'll slow it down, and I mean, from a reality standpoint, we won't borrow the money until we actually need it. But if it makes council happy, we can show that being spread out a little bit differently and then it won't have any changes in twenty-twenty, by twenty-twenty-five, it'll just slow it down a bit.
I, I think that might, i- it'll dramatically change our budget numbers for us, anyway, if we change that three million to a two million. And then spread that out, the rest of it out over twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. That'll have a big impact.
Well, the, the, the three million is one project, if council decides to like create a new approach system, that'll be done all over one winter. So what I'd suggest is one-point-five million in twenty-twenty-one and half of the one-point-five million plus half of the one-point-six million in twenty-twenty-two and the balance in twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. That will lower capital interest charges to somewhat, so will the immediate effect will be it'll reduce the amount of debt and the amount of general capital revenue that can go towards capital projects, so you know, over the short term. So the wharf gate.
Were the engineers still getting back to us on other ideas in terms of the
They are, so by the end of November, we'll have something in front of us. But in general discussions with them, when they prepared those original documents, they looked at alternate ideas and kind of it was that breakwater versus the replacement as is was kind of the real two options that were the cheapest. They're going to recalculate on a couple of the other ones, but one that they did was crib work, which was out of concrete, but they're thinking it's going to be probably 50% more than that. But they do have design changes that aren't necessarily costly, that will help maintain the look of the wharf by having posts and stuff along there. The other thing they're going to do, which I think will help with everybody is over the next couple of weeks, they're going to go down and put out some markers about where this wall, this wavebreak is going to go, how far it's going to go and how wide it's going to be. So at least you get a better visual that you can go out, you know, by mid-November, look out at low tide and see where this thing is actually going to be. So you might be thinking it's a lot worse in your mind than it is, or you might look at it, like, holy cow, it's a lot bigger than I ever anticipated. So we thought that might help. That, because just having those drawings aren't necessarily giving you the correct visual.
So are they saying though, we can't just build in the same style we have now and just raise it a bit to deal with climate change?
We can, but this is where the lifecycle analysis comes into, because then another 50 years you'll have to replace that structure.
But they never gave a lifecycle analysis of the rock, like, like the amount of dredging, whether the rocks could push around, how much it costs to add more rocks, if also we need to go higher. So, I mean, that's my hope, yeah, I hope they give a full report. And, yeah, because I had to think there's a way, or they can put enough steel girders underneath, like the newer, older wharf that you can build on top of it if you need to go a few more feet, because it's only a few more feet we're talking about here. It's not, we don't need to raise it 10 feet in 100 years, we need to raise it like three feet. So I would hope there's a better way to do it than dump that much rock.
Yep, we're having a look and council have to, have to decide what they feel is appropriate. It is very important to understand though, is that this funding is coming through Green Infrastructure Fund. So the number one priority is we gotta, and you'll see that there's an amendment under new business to the council package this week where we have to do a resiliency plan, so that'll come up to you on Monday night for
But I mean, I, I, I don't think we should do a bad idea just because we have money right now. We can always probably get more money over the next 10 years. This is an important enough program. Like, I think we really got to find the right solution and then get there. Not just, well, someone's offering us money, let's throw a bunch of rocks in our harbor. So anyways.
You get the information and you and council can instruct staff on what you feel is the best route. I'm hesitant to say though, counsel, that we can just forego this money and get it again in 10 years. I'm not so sure of that. And there is a lot of work that has to be done right now on that, so if we don't go this way, there's work that has to be done on that approach immediately. So we'll discuss all that again at a future date, but it's not, that wharf doesn't have 10 more years of life without doing something to it.
It's ironic because we're revisiting a previous decision that we've made.
This was never a decision. The decision was we need to fix the wharf. It was never to make this god awful rock quarry.
I've seen, I've seen all kinds of pictures of it.
Yeah, in
In our council chambers.
And we never approved it. In fact, I had that verified to me that it wasn't a decision not that long ago, since COVID, because I asked the question. So this was never a decision. This is something we got to vote on and we should take it to the public. Because anyone I asked, not many of them liked this idea.
Just for clarification through your worship, last time we discussed it, we said that we were going to do, get some other options and then make a decision, so. That was the last council decision I was aware of.
Correct, and just for the general public listening in, the money is tentatively approved from the other levels of government. But it was council that asked to step back because of this controversy within council about whether this is a good plan or whether we need a different plan. And it behooves us to figure this out all properly, but as quickly as possible, because I'm sure there are lots of other people applying for money that if ours is sitting in limbo, we would need to decide, so let's.
I asked two things, I was kind of hoping we'd do this before, because they have the fancy AutoCAD software. Can they not do it from eye level at low tide and from various, like, can we not, because right now we have a bird's eye view. And then we have mid tidal views. And if I think if they actually use their fancy software and show us, well, here's what it'll look like if you're standing up on King Street, looking down and from various views. Then, I mean, I could be out to lunch, I could be so wrong in this and you'd see a beautiful harbor and it would just be these little tiny rocks, but I'm pretty sure I'm not wrong. And if we could get this, then I think that would be helpful to everyone. And the only last thing I'll say on this, because it is a budget discussion, this would be the largest commitment of money, not other people's money, town money, I think we've done since I've been here. I think it's like a million bucks of actual taxpayer, St. Andrews residents' money. So, at least from what I remember, that's going to be the biggest one we've ever done. So saying we have all this free money, I think is a bit of a, I don't think it's quite true. We're about to make our biggest purchase ever since I've been here, except for I think the fire truck and maybe some, you know, if you, if you add all the roads up together. So I think we got to do this one right.
And, and after all, I don't think I need to remind people that even though it's not free money, because it's all taxpayer money and it's all our money that went to other levels of government that they're giving us back. So it's, it's all taxpayer money, no matter how you look at it, but we do not, you know, it's a million, it may be a million dollars of our money, but it's also, we couldn't buy what we need for a million dollars. And that's why we need to have partners, so I agree, we need to do this right, but we need to do it. So that we know and we don't, we don't lose by default.
But your worship, I think we could all agree that we need to do it, we just need to do it right. I agree. So that's why I look forward to getting more options so we can make the best decision for the taxpayer of St. Andrews.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spear, is that, is that everything in the general capital?
No, it's not, your worship. There's also 15, five for the wharf gate, if we want to discuss that tonight or not.
Your worship, through you, just a reminder that this was removed by a vote of three to two, and we were just going to circle back with Counselor Akaji at her respect, since she wasn't there at that meeting, to make sure that it is in fact what council's wishes. So there was arguments for and against the lift gate at the wharf.
What do you, Counselor Akaji, I guess you weren't aware that you were, that we were waiting for you to
I didn't realize.
No, I know, I'm sorry. I didn't, that message did not get back to you. I'll take responsibility for that.
Is it necessary to have the lift gate? The other one worked good. Well.
Those are the three votes for is not putting a permanent one in, but using the temporary one, if it needs to be a COVID measure for next year. That was, the other arguments were to put it in, simply the fact that they, they wish to limit traffic long term.
I don't think I want to limit traffic to the people of St. Andrews, but
Adequately, I don't think it's fair to Counselor Akaji to put her on the spot like this. She didn't hear the debate. And she doesn't seem, she doesn't have all the information. It wasn't to limit traffic, it's a town asset and might as well have a gate there when we need it rather than anyway, we went through the whole debate and to put her on the spot like this isn't really fair to her.
I don't think we need a permanent. I still think a temporary one will do.
Well, it is true. Thank you, Counselor Gru, for the show. Counselor Akaji did not hear the debate, so do we need to have this debate all over again tonight? Or does this need to be some sort of emotion, you know? One has to remember, this is just the budget. If you put in, if you put in 15,500 in the budget, it doesn't mean that we're going to run out or that Mr. Spear is going to run out and buy a gate tomorrow with the budget or the first day of January. This can come back to council for a debate on whether that money should be spent on a permanent gate. If it's not in the budget, then, then a default has occurred and we vote on it now and don't put it in the budget, or we vote on it later as to whether it's necessary when everyone is up to speed.
Your worship?
Yes.
We've already had this discussion at council. We had a vote, it was passed, there was a decision of council made. It's a done deal. And council decided not to put in a permanent gate for a variety of reasons, but council, we had a quorum at council, we made the decision and it was done. So I can't, I don't see why the gate is here. It shouldn't be, because council has decided not to do it.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Henderson, just over to you, I think it was your suggestion that we ask Counselor Akaji to be involved in this after the fact. I concur, it seems unfair after the fact.
Yeah, I think we all agree that we'd like, like her input, but it sounds like she doesn't want a permanent gate right now either, so it sounds like a vote to four to two now, so I would say that it could be removed.
I think Counselor Gru is right. There was a vote, it's three to two, there's no point in revisiting it for another vote. Three to two based on the quorum that was available, so Mr. Spear, could you please take that out of the budget? Okay. Utility, I think we're at, are we now?
I've got a question, your worship.
Yes.
Here is, we have a fairly big budget item for Market Square refurbishment. I was wondering if Mr. Spear could speak to that a little bit to let council know what that's about?
Yes, certainly. Sorry, I have my mute button on, but I was going to circle back because we still have that big item. So the Market Square refurbishments, simply put, is to put more granite there. So it's a, not granite, but armor stone. So what the plan is, like you have the wavebreak going up to the wharf, this is going to be an extension if Mr. Murphy, who runs the restaurant that's on the water there, had built out his wavebreak out into the harbor some to take into sea rise, so we're just basically going to extend that all the way behind the Island Quest building and replace the wooden the wooden seat wall there with a rock one. The height of the rock wall wouldn't be that much higher. I think it's about halfway up the railing that's there now. But what would happen is they raise the asphalt a little bit, so people will be able to walk up and still look over it. That one shouldn't obstruct the view of anyone at all, because it's especially that Market Square is elevated lower than Water Street. So most people won't even notice it, and even if you're on Water Street, it will be rock, which some people may not like the wood, but the wood's being undermined. And with these rising sea ties and stuff, it's probably going to create more problems. If you remember at Easter, there was a video going around of several inches of water on Market Square, this would eliminate that.
Okay, I, I'm a little bit confused by this one, Mr. Spear, and that it seems when I looked at the drawings for the Wharf renovation project, it included the piece that goes in front of Market Square. So I guess the Wharf renovation project almost supersedes this Market Square refurbishment one, does it not?
No, they can be treated separately for sure. They're independent of each other and the prices on the budget reflect the two different costs. But the only solution really for Market Wharf, or sorry, Market Square, is the rock. That, there really is no other solution. That's not going to create a problem in relatively short term, within 10 or 15 years. If you replace it with wood, you're going to run into the same thing again.
So the drawings we've seen for the wharf include the Market Square refurbishment project?
Yeah, it was submitted, it's submitted as one project to the province, all tied in together.
The, the other, the other project for Market Square refurbishment, and I've identified it to you, and we were going to get a study from CBCL, I don't know if we've received anything, is with regards to the bricks. We've had cases of residents slipping and falling on those bricks. And I'm not sure if that's come back to us yet, but I think we need to put a place marker there or something for bricks.
We actually have a contractor, so we talked to CBCL and they said, long story short, is it's the same brick that's used everywhere in that type of situation, that really what's reflected is that was put in and the you know, from traffic driving over it and stuff, it smoothed it out. But, you know, it's not that inappropriate brick there. Should it be replaced? Probably, but he wouldn't call it a high priority. However, we've gone to a contractor to ask them to provide a quote of what would cost to replace the bricks. That may take two or three weeks, but I think Terry, if I remember, it's over $100,000 when you did the original initial estimate.
I think it was around, actually about $260,000.
Have we had many complaints of people falling on these bricks?
Nothing through the town, like no legal action. I'm not saying people, I'll be the first to admit, I've taken slips on that. I tend to slip on the curbs more than the bricks, but I'm not disagreeing. You know, our staff is excellent about hitting stuff down and sanding and salting just as best as they can. But it's not just Market Square, it's the whole on the front street, it's the same material.
Where it comes from is, I, I've been approached by one resident who fractured three ribs in a fall on, on the bricks on Market Square and, and you know, it's, it's, it can be quite serious if you when, when you're walking on those bricks, when it's wet out, or if there's any kind of, you know, frost, they are extremely slippery.
Can we turn them over?
They probably have, but just to be clear, CBCL said, there's no sense of them doing a study on it, because it is what it is, like they're going to tell us the same thing, it's it's what's been practically in use, and yes, they probably should be replaced because of wear and tear. So it's just a matter of getting a quote for what it's going to cost to replace that. Which we've actively asked a contractor to do, so hopefully that'll be in your hands. I think I'm ready for page thirty, your worship.
Great. Mr. Spear, we're going to page thirty.
Yeah, these are the projects under the utility, if your worship.
Okay, good.
All right, so the first thing is under the concrete reservoir to get a backup to our SCADA system for low water indicator, council members earlier this year, we had the town almost ran out of water. Low pressure all throughout the town, that the system had failed. That system has been replaced already, but we want to have a secondary system just to make sure that if there's an issue with the pumps, it becomes, it's only 6,500. The big one is reconditioning the steel reservoir. We've already reconditioned the concrete reservoir earlier this spring. And we do that one, that'll see Terry and I out for sure. Fifteen to 20 year project. It is a need, it's probably a couple of years past due. So requires inspection, which they, I've already did an inspection and gave us like some informal advice. But they're saying that it should be done fairly soon. Is that correct, Terry?
Correct, Chris.
That when they were in, I think with the concrete reservoir, they had a camera that they ran and had a look at it. So the commercial meter program, we've talked again, under our current bylaw, commercial meters are actually the responsibility of the establishments. The problem we have is after we did that water study, they said that the meters, there's no incentive for them to replace the meters, that they kind of, they tend to malfunction and slow down. So it's staff's recommendation that we take that out of the current bylaw and start replacing some of these larger meters. The hope is that that'll increase the revenue for the places that we do replace them, that probably offset that within two to five years, my guess. Then below that, under the, is the, for lift station renovations is the portable generator for power outages. And so what happens is we have three or four lift stations in town that move sanitary waste to the lagoon. In the event of a power outage, the stuff can overflow into the bay. But we have enough capacity that if there's a long power outage, staff can just keep going, like turn the pumps on with this one portable generator, keep it going and then circle back. So it'd stay in shop somewhere inside. And then if needed, staff would just go out and start the system going so we don't get into an overflow situation. Then thirty thousand dollars for a UV chamber overhaul. That's at the water treatment plant. So we're sixteen years into that. It's when I first started with the town that that was been in operation. So it is due for like a refurbishment and that's regarding the electrical and the bulbs that go in there. There's two stacks. We've done a lot of them this year. So this is the second half of that project. There's also a backup water pump for the system. They have three. We'd like one more just in case something goes down and you can put it in and out and get the other one fixed and still have the three. Then screens for the backwash show as part of the system. As every once in a while, staff have to go out and reverse the flow of the water to clean out the screens that are catching any debris that are helmets that come in from the lake. And so it's just a system to clean that out and clean it out before it goes into the environment. It's reversed and just pumped out, out there. So that's for fourteen thousand dollars. So we go to next page. Page thirty. At the lagoon, we'd originally talked about replacing the liner this year, but for, because of COVID and various reasons, we held it off. So it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's really not a replacement. It's a fixed liner that's there. There was some damage done because of pumps or the things that blow the air, the aerators had fallen into it. A big part of the cost council is to do it right. You've got to actually clean all the sludge out of there. So that's a big part of the cost is that they have to take one offline, bring in equipment to clean the sludge that is currently there and have it hauled away. And then to replace the liner that's underneath. And a blower unit for the aerators, which is what causes the pumping sensation at the, at the lagoon. And Sapphire Streets, it's really under two spots here. Is that so far? Yeah. So it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to replace the water lines. I think that's on the block between clean and water, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, yes, from Terry. And then there's another hundred and twenty-five for the sewer mains on the next page. And there's a section of King, King Street that we need to replace the sewer mains on. Terry, I don't know what block that is. I kind of forget about the dialogue.
That's, yeah, it's on King Street. So starting at Prince of Wales, going towards Kingsbury.
Okay. And so that's a total budget of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars under capital projects, the utility. We have about a hundred and eighty-six thousand and leftover utility fees that we can use towards it, which means we have to borrow about seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to do all those projects next year. As discussed by, by council, sorry, your worship, I'll just add this really quick, that we had increased the annual inflation to four percent in revenues. And that did allow a fairly big increase so that, if you remember in earlier versions of the budget, that line transfer for operating fund had almost fallen down to thirty thousand dollars by year five. But that did allow us to stay up at a hundred, you know, stay at around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that comes from operations. But that's a percent increase in revenue one way or the other over those five years that we'll have to discuss with this council, future councils to make that happen. And really, it's really two things. It's either raise water weights or stop projects. And that's really the two options because the system, so there will be some funding that comes in over time. But the funding is only a small portion of what we really need to keep moving forward on this. Thank you, worship. I'm now done.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spear.
Your worship?
Yes, Counselor Gru.
Thank you. If I could, I, I could just add is we, we still have a, a sustainability problem with regards to the utilities budget. And what I mean by that is when you look at the, I guess, the net operating expenses, they're running at around two hundred thousand dollars per year. And when you look at the capital program, it's running at about a million dollars. So we have a deficit of about eight hundred thousand dollars a year type thing. So we're incurring more and more debt to operate the utility. And in fact, when you look at the, the utility fund debt analysis that Mr. Spear has provided, and thank you very much for that, we're seeing a tripling of the town debt level for utility fund going from one point eight million to five point two million. And that is not sustainable. We, we can't do that. Because when we, and, and that brings us up to a debt service ratio of forty-three percent. And when you look at, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out beyond twenty twenty-five, we are going to be as a town in a real world of hurt. And we need to do something between now and twenty twenty-five to address that situation. And as a council, a four percent increase per year is just not going to cut it. It has to be, we have to identify or flag a more substantial increase for next councils. And we say, okay, this is an issue you need to address. We don't know what the exact solution is right now, but it's a big issue that has to be addressed. And we're probably talking increases of at least ten to fifteen percent a year in the water rates to bring this up to a level that, that is going to be sustainable over the long term. We, we, we can sort of close our eyes, bury our head in the sand, but at the end of the day, the numbers are here and it shows you that this is not sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor Gru. We all understand that it's very expensive to run a utility in a small town or in any town. So I, I get your point, you know. But at this point in time, we're at, we'll be, we're asking our citizens to pay for debt servicing instead of paying upfront to reduce debt servicing. And you're saying it's unsustainable, but when we look at it, Mr. Spear, maybe not tonight, but maybe you could give us a little bit of, where's everybody else in the world? And my understanding is that most jurisdictions have the very same problem and most jurisdictions have worse debt ratios than we do for their utility. Has anybody, has anybody solved it to break even that we're aware of?
Your worship, the, well, no, no one solved it, your worship. And it is on staff's agenda. The next few, do more in-depth analysis of this, of various things, like where the rates should consider to be. But it may be an opportunity to, to review, because we had that report done a few years ago now, that we may want to revisit that. But sorry, Deputy Mayor also had his hand raised, your worship.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
I, I, I certainly appreciate Counselor Gru's thoughts. We've, we've discussed this several times. Every time we hit this at the end of it, I can appreciate it. He is not wrong. However, I don't want to waste a bunch of staff's time currently doing an analysis on something that this council is not going to fulfill. We have a municipal plan. We have a secondary plan. We have a zoning plan. We've talked about the transport, active transportation plan. The reality is, is I don't think this council in the last five months that it has is going to get through all of this and fix the water rate. So although I appreciate staff doing the analysis so they can help prepare the next council better, the reality is that's not a decision that this council is probably going to make. So we can certainly flag it and give indication that they're going to have to find a, a way to get more revenue in the future. But I don't think this council needs to spend any time debating how to get there.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I also think kind of the converse of this is a lot of these projects are probably going to be a ten-year plan, not a five-year plan. Because I don't know if there is going to be a lot more money, even if we get twenty-five or up to fifty percent, it's still a lot of money. And I guess we may just have to push some of these out. This may be more, still more of a wish list than a, what we're, what we're going to actually do. Either that or going to really high water rates.
Well, this council is aware too, there's economic development issues. If you start to skyrocket, your water rates too high. Counselor Gru is right, but it's a very complicated issue that goes more than just trying to balance your books.
Yeah. Hey. Council. I think we're at the end of the discussion of what Mr. Spear has presented to us. Are we pretty comfortable now with taking a look at debating the approval of this budget on Monday night?
I think we are, your worship. I think we've gone through it and I think we're in a place where we can do it now.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If everybody else is okay with that, I guess.
Thank you. I, I would make one request. I would request that the, the operating budget and the utility budget be separated into two separate motions so that we can, you know, raise our concerns on each individual budget where, and, and you can vote in favor of one budget without voting in favor of the other one. And, you know, because I, I, I'm still not comfortable with the utility budget as it stands. However, I am very comfortable with the operating budget.
So, Mr. Spear, is that, we got to get in trouble with the provincial government for organizing our motions that way or can we do it that way?
No, we can break it up, your worship. We sometimes glue them together because at that point, council just wants to get to the end of it. But certainly it's not a big deal to split that motion to.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Spear. Counselor Gru, Mr. Spear will, will do that.
Thank you.
For Monday night. All right. Mr. Knopper, I think we're at questions from the public.
Through you, your worship, I'll start with who's on Zoom. So Neil, if you have any question or if you've got a question for council on tonight's agenda, you've got your time to present it now.
Thank you, Mr. Knopper. Through your worship, thank you for including me in this. We, I, I was, I heard the whole proceedings about the tourism levy. I will have to confer with our parent organization, the Chamber, because the numbers that we were presented today are, are new to us. So I understand you're looking for a detailed budget. We will endeavor to do the best we can with a volunteer organization with very little time. But we will present at least an overview. We've done some work with the, the committee to establish a vision and marketing priorities. And we appreciate council's consideration of putting extra funds towards destination marketing, which is a very important endeavor for this town. I agree with Deputy Mayor Henderson on, on his stance on that. So we do appreciate the additional funds there and we will look to activate a V I C if, if, if feasible. There is some question as to whether it's a destination marketing operation. Frankly, it is not. But when I put my full-time job hat on as a tourism operator, I do recognize, and I think our, I can speak on behalf of our committee, we recognize there is still significant value in that. So we will endeavor to find a way to, to make that operate in some form or fashion. At this point, I have no other questions of council unless there's any questions that, that you wish to be directed towards the town.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Through you, your worship, looking at the comments online, there's not actually a question from the comments from the public there. But I would encourage council to read over our Facebook for the comments. But other than that, council, back to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knopper. Appreciate that. Comments from council? Anyone have a comment other than? See you all on Monday night. Counselor Gru.
Thank you, your worship. Just one comment. I, I noticed that in, in looking at the agenda for Monday night, there's been two new items added that were not discussed at our, our, our meeting. And, and I just wanted to suggest that perhaps if they're not urgent, that those two items might be moved to the December meeting rather than November meeting to give council an opportunity to, to review those items and to get familiar with them.
Okay, I will discuss that tomorrow with Mr. Spear and Mr. Knopper to determine that and let you know, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I haven't had a chance to address that.
Yes.
Yes.
I just, whenever we do this, it's always good. I just wanted to, I know Emily's on here as well as Terry. And then Paul and Chris, just thank you for all your work with the budget. I think it was actually the quickest we, well, certainly the earliest, but I think it was the quickest and believe it or not, least amount of meetings that we ever did to pass a budget. So great work on getting us concise, getting consensus and really appreciate all their efforts for, again, the earliest budget that we potentially will ever have approved.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Practice makes perfect, eh, for us.
I think your worship, the, the quality of the budget documents speaks for themselves and, and it made, it made council's job a whole lot easier. When we were going through these budget documents and you could see the, the thought that went behind them. So again, I echo those, those sentiments. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I concur, Counselor Gru, and I appreciate your comments on behalf of staff. All right. Anybody else have any comments? This evening. Look, thank you, council. I, I think we've had a very successful and important deliberation of budget this year as well. I want to appreciate, and I appreciate the diligence that our council has put into this this year and every year, of course. But we've been much more efficient. Practice makes perfect. And anyway, thank you so much. And I will, I think that's it for this evening. I don't have any particular comments other than what I've made. And look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Thank you, Counselor Gummichelle. And a seconder? Counselor Akaji, you had to be involved. Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you, council.
Thank you.